Okay, it is five o'clock. I'll call the special meeting of Monday, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. The Wausau School District School Board will be hearing statements on behalf of applicants for the Wausau School District to fill a vacancy to the Wausau School District School Board. The vacancy is for an unexpired term and will be for a term commencing on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and running through April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-sixth. I'm going to call each applicant in order. Each applicant may come up to the table here. Please press the button on the microphone. It'll turn green to make a statement. You're not required to, but if you'd like to. We have received what you already submitted, so you don't need to read that again to us. We have that. After you make your statement, if you choose to do so, if there's anyone here to make a statement on your behalf, they may come up and do the same. If something has been sent in in writing, Mr. Bushman will read that statement. And then for board members as well, just a reminder, tonight is not the interview night. We're allowed to ask a question if there's like a clarifying question, but tonight's not the night that we interview anyone. That happens when we get to the next meeting, when we reduce it down to four candidates, then there'll be interviews. Okay, and up first is Cody Nagly. If you want to hit the mic, Cody, then you can just leave it on.
All right. Well, thank you, guys, for allowing me to be here and, you know, trying to fill this vacant spot. I don't have much to really say other than, you know, I mean, my experience. I did serve on the board for three years, and, you know, I think we had a pretty good run. We made some changes at that time, and I think I'm still somewhat familiar with the things that are still going on in the district. So I just thought I'd try to fulfill that spot that Jane left and be happy to come and serve again. My plan is to run this April, well, for election to the school board again, so I'm here to serve if needed.
Great, thank you. Anyone here on behalf of Mr. Nagly?
No.
Any statements submitted?
No statements.
Okay, thank you. And Mia Kang? She's not here, I don't believe. Do we have any statements submitted on behalf of Ms. Kang?
None.
Okay. Then we'll go to Charles Berger.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I want to thank the board for opening the session up. I know it's a policy to go and replace, you know, a member going out, but, you know, I submitted a letter early on in August, and I just wanted to add to that, you know, about what education means to me. In nineteen forty-eight, at the end of World War II, while the Allies were squabbling over who was going to carve up Germany, the Soviet Union quietly went and annex Czechoslovakia, in which they interviewed every student, every grade. What's your, what are you doing and what is your purpose? And there was a student at the Saint Charles University who had to become the youngest graduate in Greek law. And when they interviewed him, they said, "We see you as a laborer. We don't see you having much of a future at all. We don't, we aren't going to take that away." And he thought enough to say, "I've got to get out of here." He was able to get to France, immigrate and get a visa to the United States, included his bachelor's and then master's program, and be quite successful until they let him know his visa had run out. His visa was only good for undergrad, not graduate work. And at that time, he self-deported for eight years. Eight years in Australia, writing letters back to congressmen and senators, "Please can I come back to the United States and complete my journey?" He initially did, got a doctorate from, a PhD from UW-Madison, became a professor of thirty-two years of political science. It's touching to me, and it means a lot, I think, to every student here, because that man was my father, staring at adversity, seeing that education above all really meant that much, to go and leave your family, leave the home that you'd seen, you know, torn apart by war, and you could have been part of the rebuilding, but really take part of that. And I've kind of taken that with me, and you can see in the, in the letter that I wrote, going and working with some of the largest companies in the world, standing in the Vehicle Assembly Building of NASA, five hundred and sixty-five feet, one of the largest buildings in the world, and seeing as the last shuttles were being, you know, put together and ready for the last mission. I sat there and I questioned, "How did I get here, being from Wausau, Wisconsin? What an incredible opportunity." And I'd like to make sure that every student that comes before us, whether it's in pre-K, whether it's at South Mountain, North Mountain, Riverview, et cetera, they all know that the limits that they have are not, they don't exist here. The kids from Wausau can do anything, and I'd like to be part of the solution that sees them continuing on their journey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I know we've got some statements on behalf of Mr. Berger. Anybody present with you today?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Dear Wausau School District Board members, it is my great honor to write this letter recommendation on behalf of Mr. Charles Berger, who is seeking a seat on the Wausau School District Board of Education. I have known Charles both personally and professionally, and I can state with confidence that he brings a rare combination of deep community roots, strong leadership skills, and unwavering commitment to student success that will make him an exceptional asset to the board. Charles is a lifelong resident of Wausau and a proud graduate of Wausau East High School. His professional career spans more than thirty years, advising major organizations such as Lockheed Martin, NASA, and Raytheon on complex projects requiring precision, innovation, and collaboration. Beyond his impressive professional accomplishments, he has invested countless volunteer hours into our community, particularly supporting Wausau West Athletics and the extracurricular programs that foster teamwork, discipline, and school spirit. These efforts have generated significant financial support for students, ensuring that all can participate fully regardless of their financial circumstances. As a pediatric dental specialist who has served the Wausau community for decades, understand firsthand the importance of building strong academic, extracurricular, and community partnerships to prepare our students for the future. Both of my daughters attend Wausau East High School and Horace Mann Middle School and have a long, have long been an advocate for advancing opportunities in STEM programs and skilled trades. In this context, I deeply value Charles' clear vision for supporting teachers, modernizing curricula, and preparing graduates for both higher education and public service. His passion for student achievement is evident in all that he does, and his leadership will undoubtedly strengthen the district's tradition of excellence. Charles' record of volunteerism, combined with his recognition as Instructor of the Year by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, demonstrates his ability to educate, inspire, and lead. He is thoughtful, community-minded, and unafraid to tackle complex issues with both fairness and foresight. I give Charles Berger my highest recommendation for the Wausau School District Board of Education. I'm confident he will bring integrity, energy, and a future-focused perspective that will benefit students, teachers, and families across our community. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of his candidacy. Sincerely, Thomas Turner.
Dear members of the Wausau School District Board of Education, it is a pleasure to recommend Charles Berger to fill the current vacant seat on the Wausau School Board. Based on his longstanding and dedicated involvement in the Wausau School District community, I believe Charles possesses the broad perspective, commitment, and parental experience necessary to be an invaluable asset to the board. Charles' strong connection to the district has developed as a result of having his five children attend the Wausau School District. This experience has given him a unique, comprehensive understanding of the district's offerings and the varied paths students can take. His experience firsthand the full spectrum of educational experiences, from rigorous college preparatory programs to essential work-based learning opportunities. This diversity of his perspective is critical for a board member who would be representing the need of all students. His commitment goes far beyond simply being a parent. Last school year, he was deservedly honored with the Friends of Education Award for his extensive contributions, particularly at Wausau West High School. Charles is a true hands-on supporter of the district, consistently demonstrating his dedication in the following ways: Supporting academics. He generally donates apples to our family and consumer science classes, enriching the students' practical learning experiences. Supporting extracurricular activities. He has been a supporter of athletics through the Booster Clubs. His efforts have included raising money through concessions and personally renovating the Wausau West concession trailer. For many years, Charles Berger has been an informed and active member of the public, demonstrating an interest in the long-term success of the Wausau School District. His experience as a parent who has navigated various educational paths, combined with his record of volunteerism and support, makes him an exceptionally qualified candidate. Please consider Charles for this important role. He'll bring a dedicated and experienced voice to the board. Sincerely, Jeb Steckmore.
Dear Wausau School District Board members, it is my great honor to write this letter recommendation on behalf of Mr. Charles Berger, who is seeking a seat on the Wausau School District Board of Education. I've known Charles both personally and professionally since nineteen eighty-three, and I can state with confidence that he brings a rare combination of energy, strong leadership skills, and incredible ability to solve complex problems with humor and effectiveness while building teams to succeed. His commitment to student success will make him an exceptional asset to the board. As my father was caretaker for the Wausau School Forest for decades, I saw his passion for student learning. While there was a full day or a full week, he never wavered in ensuring that each child left the school forest with an appreciation for what it had to offer. I see that same passion in Charles. His countless hours donating his time, materials, and energy to help students raise funds for their clubs, or even have fresh apples for the Wausau West Home Economics class with Mrs. Cerny, show me that he is not just willing to work when the spotlight is on him, but when the work is tough and needs to be done. Charles has brought positive recognition to the district by paying for renovations and supplies, such as popcorn machines and warmers for the Warrior One trailer, which is now at every Warrior football game. I was impressed that Charles stood before the board years ago advocating for turf fields as their climate is not the best for early spring sports or after significant rains. As I drive past Wausau West and see the consistent impressive playing fields, I can only hope that future generations take advantage of the facilities and achieve their highest level of play. Electing Charles to the school board today will bring the energy, attention to detail, and problem-solving skills that a community like ours depends on. As learning has evolved and new challenges with technology like AR at our doorstep, I truly believe his appointment will help engage our teachers, students, and community to ensure our future is in great hands. Thank you, Kimberly Bijek.
Dear Board members, I'm writing this letter recommendation on behalf of Mr. Charles Berger, who is seeking a seat on the Wausau School District Board of Education. I've known Charles for the past twelve years. He's an active member of his church, an unwavering family man, and a loyal friend. Charles is a lifelong resident of Wausau. He's a person of integrity and practices what he preaches. From raising apples and bees to countless hours of volunteering for Wausau West High School Athletics, he puts forth one-hundred percent effort in what he does, and it shows. Charles was also recently awarded Instructor of the Year by the Department of Natural Resources. As a twenty-year NTC Machine Tool Advisory Board Member and Chair, I have long been an advocate for advancing opportunities in STEM programs and skilled trades. The trades are vital to the community and state. His passion for soon achievement is evident in all he does, and his leadership undoubtedly strengthened the district's tradition of excellence. I hold Charles Berger in the highest regard and sincerely believe that he would be an excellent choice for the school board. Sincerely, Craig Lang.
To whom it may concern, I am honored to recommend Charles Berger for the open position of the Wausau School Board. I have the privilege of walking, working alongside Charles through his dedicated service to the Wausau West Gridiron Booster Club, where his leadership, creativity, and generosity left a lasting impact on the program and our community. For four years, Charles was an integral part of the Booster Club, playing a key role in raising the highest amount of funds the program has ever achieved, which was over seventy thousand dollars annually. His ability to mobilize resources, connect with families, and inspire community support was truly unmatched. Beyond fundraising, Charles spearheaded the complete remodel of the mobile concession stand, proudly naming it Warrior One. His vision and dedication transformed it into not just a concession stand, but a symbol of school pride. Charles' efforts extended far beyond dollars and logistics. He became affectionately known as the Concession King, a title that reflects both his tireless work and his remarkable ability to bring people together. Whether he was traveling miles to secure popcorn poppers, ensuring that athletes and parents had food during away games, or personally contributing to team dinners, Charles consistently demonstrated his deep commitment to students and their families. His efforts made Wausau West concessions one-of-a-kind, available at every football game across all levels, and an experience the entire community came to enjoy. Charles consistently demonstrates dedication, innovation, and an unwavering passion for supporting both students and teachers. He has shown time and again that he is willing to go above and beyond to strengthen programs, build community connections, and create opportunities for success. His ability to unite people around a common goal while keeping the needs of students and educators at the forefront is exactly what makes him an asset to any leadership role. I cannot think of a more deserving candidate for this position. Charles has my highest recommendation, and I'm confident he will serve the Wausau School Board with distinction, integrity, and the same enthusiasm he has always shown in our community. Sincerely, Jamie Alberti Bowers.
To whom it may concern, it is with great enthusiasm that I recommend Charles Berger for the position of Wausau School Board. Charles has consistently demonstrated a deep commitment to the success and well-being of our students, particularly through his tireless efforts in supporting and strengthening our athletic programs. Charles has been instrumental in bringing together volunteers, organizing impactful fundraising initiatives, and securing generous donations to ensure that multiple sports programs across our schools are well-funded and accessible to all students. His ability to unite community members around a shared vision of student success is truly remarkable. Through his leadership, Charles has helped build a more inclusive and vibrant athletic culture, one that not only promotes physical health and teamwork, but also instills pride and school spirit. His dedication goes beyond logistics and numbers. He genuinely cares about the students, coaches, and families who benefit from these programs. I'm confident that Charles will bring the same energy, integrity, and collaborative spirit to the Wausau School Board. His experience in community engagement and resource development will be a tremendous asset as the board continues to navigate the challenges and opportunities facing our schools. Please feel to contact me if you'd like further insight into Charles' qualifications and contributions. Sincerely, Tamara Sellers.
Dear Wausau School Board members, I'm writing on behalf of the application of Charles Berger and for your consideration of him for the Wausau School Board vacancy. I've known Charles for nearly ten years and have had the privilege of walking alongside him in multiple volunteer capacities for the Wausau School District and in the community. It is my pleasure to be able to give you greater understanding of who he is and the depth of his character. I can assure you that Charles is someone that you would be proud to have as a representative of the Wausau School and Board of Education. Charles is someone who brings a positive influence to every group and role that he participates in. He's an enthusiastic leader who is incredibly generous with his time, resources, and energy. I watch him serve others selflessly and volunteer countless hours and efforts to support Wausau West Athletics and our community needs. As a product of the Wausau School District and as a Wausau East grad himself, Charles brings a deep commitment and passion for our community schools. He's the father of five children who are currently a part of the Wausau School District or our recent successful graduates. This role brings a critical perspective that allows him to have a greater understanding of the experience of our district parents and students, as well as an appreciation of the current needs within the school of our community. Additionally, through the professional experiences that Charles has had, he brings an ability to lead with excellence, collaborate with large teams, and effectively analyze complex systems. All these skills will be helpful assets to the complex decision-making and collaborative work required of a board member. Most importantly, however, it is the personal integrity, hard work, self-service, and positive leadership that Charles consistently displays that will make him an outstanding Wausau School Board member. It is without hesitation that I recommend Charles Berger for the Board of Education seat vacancy. He will most definitely be an outstanding contributor to the board and to the Wausau School District community. Thank you for your thoughtful considerations. Karen Vandenburgh. That concludes...
Thank you. Michelle Gleason.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and thank you for your dedication and your service on the school board. I'd like to take this time to share a little bit about who I am, why I've chosen to apply, and what my intentions are in seeking this position. Walking into this building is pretty nostalgic for me. This is where I began my Wausau School District journey: kindergarten, first grade, and part of second grade, before Hawthorne Hills was built. I have fond memories here at Longfellow, like heading to the basement for tornado drills and putting a big textbook over my head. Those were the days when school safety meant storms, not conversations about active shooters. I'm sure we all wish times were simpler. From here, I went to John Meere and then Wausau East. I truly loved my experience as a student at the Wausau School District. Today, I'm grateful to see my own children receiving an excellent education in this district. They attend Riverview and are now, or they attended Riverview and are now at Horace Mann. And our family has been so impressed with the teachers, staff, principals, and peers who have shaped their experience. This deep gratitude is one of the main reasons why I chose to apply. I've always believed in giving back to the community that has given so much to me. Over the years, I volunteered with the National Alliance on Mental Illness, recently began serving as a court-appointed special advocate for CASA, and continue to live out the values of a service as a Rotarian. Service above self is more than a motto; it's how I strive to live. When I reflect on my career and service, one word comes to mind, and that's community. If you know me, you probably have heard me say, "I love Wausau," at least once a week, maybe even every other day. I'm deeply grateful to live, work, and raise my family here. It would be an honor to serve on the school board, where I can help improve the lives of both students and staff. I want to be clear about my intentions. I'm not applying to push a personal agenda. I'm not applying to seek power or prestige. My intention is simply to be helpful. I want to work collaboratively with this group to advance academic excellence, support our teachers and staff, and continue making Wausau schools the very best they can be. Apart from my personal experience in the Wausau School District as a student and a parent, I also bring education and work experience to the table. I spent eighteen years at North Central Healthcare, where I gained extensive experience in disabilities, mental health, and substance use while working with individuals, children, and families. My two years as an executive director at Peaceful Solutions Counseling taught me about budgeting, business operations, leadership, and addressing complex issues such as domestic violence. And now in my current role at the Community Foundation of North Central Wisconsin, I'm privileged to work in philanthropy, literally the love of humanity, which is a perfect fit for me. I feel blessed to have the capacity and motivation to serve. As a mother, lifelong learner, licensed clinical social worker, former executive director, teacher, coach, and now development director, I can offer a unique set of skills to help our schools lead bravely with love. I will bring integrity, a collaborative spirit, leadership, an open mind, and along with my education, experience, and passion to help our board and administration make thoughtful decisions, always keeping the best interests of students at the center. Lastly, I'll share with you my family's response to me applying for this position. I started with my husband, of course, and I thought for sure he would say, "Are you crazy? One more thing, you're adding to the list." But his response was very supportive. He said, "You should do it." And of course, he said that. He's my number-one fan, very supportive. Next, I told my fourteen-year-old, and if you have a teenager, you'll appreciate this response, "I'm applying for the school board." Cool. Period. And then I moved my twelve-year-old, and I said, "Honey, I'm applying for the school board." And he said, "Great, you can make him start school later." So that's truly why I'm here. I really appreciate the time, and I thank you so much for your service and giving me this opportunity. I'd love to work alongside of you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Liberty Heidman?
I don't have a whole lot more to add. I provided my resume and a statement with my information, and I think it goes over my history pretty well. I've been in higher education for the past twenty years, and I've just started working with workforce development for the area Workforce Development Board in this part of the state. I've also taught at the college level. I did a little bit of substitute teaching, which, phew, it was only at the elementary schools, which was not the demographic I was going for, but, you know, bless those teachers, because that's a rough gig. But education is a passion of mine. It always has been, and it's especially a passion for those who love to learn, because sometimes education as a system may not fit everyone who loves to learn. So thinking through, how can we be more creative to give every student an opportunity to learn that may not look the same as the student sitting next to them? Coming up with those creative ways, and especially now when there's going to be some funding challenges, especially at the federal level, we may have to rethink a lot of things that we're doing to ensure that the services we can provide and the support that we can provide doesn't falter. So thank you again, and I would love to work alongside you all.
Thank you.
I would like to offer my support for Liberty Heidman to fill the current vacancy on the Wausau School Board. I have known her for nearly twenty years, and she exemplifies professionalism, dedication, and clear thinking in all matters. As I was the president of the Wausau Area Montessori Charter School Governance Council for six years, I am well-versed in the purview and duties of the Wausau School Board. For two of those years, I have served with Ms. Heidman on that council, and her insight and perspective was invaluable. She was not only a productive and active board member, she brought a grounding quality that served the entire school well and was a strong and effective voice for the children and families we served. I have no doubt she will be an outstanding member of the Wausau School Board and has my full support. Thank you, Bill Conway.
To the Wausau School Board, my name is Sarah Watson, and I'm here to strongly support Liberty Libby Heidman for the open seat on the board. I worked alongside Libby for more than a decade, and in that time, she proved herself to be a true advocate for both students and educators. She always puts first, students first, shaping policies and practices with their needs at the center. She also supported her colleagues with fairness and collaboration. Libby brings experience, integrity, and a student-focused vision that would be an asset to this board. I respectfully urge you to appoint her to the open seat. Thank you.
John Huntington?
Thanks for having me be part of this. Some familiar faces. I was part of the elementary school task force last summer, sat through all that, and then was also part of the three-day Wausau Future Program that was up at Wausau East, and it was apparent that there's a lot of input from the community, and there's a lot of changes probably going to happen or need to happen, and that my input was valued during the elementary school consolidation program. So that's what brought me to come to this, apply for this seat tonight, and would like to be part of the board, because with my background from construction to mid-level management and forecasting and stuff, and I've been part of now in my career, and also a lifelong Wausau resident and graduate of the program, or Wausau East School District, I would be honored to be part of this, so thanks.
Thank you. And Kimberly Sevillah, I believe, is joining us remotely.
Hi, can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you for accommodating me for this very short notice. Well, my name is Kimberly. I'm a physical therapist by profession. For the last three years, I have been a pediatric physical therapist. It has been my passion and goal in life to make sure that the kids for the future have access to medical care and better education. I bet that I do not have experience in the school system for the primary and secondary levels, but I was a part-time or substitute professor for a physical therapist assistant. And I've taken a new role as a director of rehabilitation in one of the hospitals here in Wausau, where I continue to learn and grow my career and the knowledge that it comes with. As I continue to grow as a therapist, as an individual, I would like to further utilize my time and passion to serve in the school system that my child is now a part of. We are near to the Wausau area. Having moved in March of this year, we moved from Texas to be closer to family here in the Midwest. If I will be given the opportunity to be considered to be part of the board, I will make sure to hear the voices and concerns, if not just the parents, but the students as well, being scheduling, and I know in the beginning we had some transportation problems, and then the curriculum is needed, and then all the other extracurriculars. That is all that I have for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is all of the applicants. So at this time, we can have discussion if needed, and then following that, we'll submit our ballots. Everyone should have multiple ballots in front of them, just in case there's a tie vote that we need to do it again. Each ballot should have all seven names and only seven names. You'll need to make a mark next to three selections, and you'll need to sign the bottom. We'll give those to Kale, who will then tally the vote. But does any, any board members have any question or any items of discussion before we do that? Okay, so everybody select three, and then we'll pass those down, or Kale's going to pick them up.
Okay, so we have a tie. So we're going to do a revote because a tie vote is considered void. So we're going to vote again. And we'll ask again if there's any discussion or questions or comments from anyone.
Because I got one question.
And I should have asked this earlier. My apologies. And if you don't know, that's totally fine. But this seat goes until April of twenty-six, at which time there's obviously gonna be another election beginning of April, whatever that is, third or fourth. Is it your intent to, or do you know if it's your intent to run again or run for an official seat in April?
Run again.
Everybody is. Okay, great. Thank you. Oh, I think she was. Ms. Sevillah, I don't know if you heard the question?
Yes, yes, I did.
And it is, would it be your intent to run again in April for a longer term?
Um, I'm quite unsure yet as of this moment.
Okay.
Will that be okay?
That is perfectly fine. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so we'll again, um, select three, make sure you sign. You don't select more than three or less than three. Actually, if you do your, what will be, the ballots, I don't know if I want to have a tie.
Okay. So we no longer have a tie. So I'm going to read the top four applicants, which will become then candidates that will be interviewed at the October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five special meeting. And I'm, um, reading these not in any particular order, but just in the same order that we had for our ballot. Cody Nicolai, Charles Berger, Michelle Gleason, and John Huntington. So those will be our four that will move forward then to the October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five special board meeting. Thank you all for, um, coming and applying. And for those who didn't apply, um, we had a tie and I know it was hard for me to only vote for three. I'm sure others felt the same way. I think we're blessed to have so many good candidates that were interested. Seeking a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.